We're gonna go get our meeting started, we're six minutes late. However, we know it's important to address the important. So, we're gonna go and get started, and we're led in salute to Nations Flag by Councilwoman Hernandez, and invocation by Mayor Portman Noble. All please stand.
Bow your head, most heavenly and gracious father, we come before you once again to say thank you. Thank you for waking us up this morning, and thank you for allowing us to be here. Thank you for allowing each and every one us to be in your midst. We ask that you watch over each and every one as as we go through our meeting this afternoon. Father God, we ask that you continue to watch over our sick and shut up, and give your loving arms around them and protect them. We ask that you continue to watch over those that couldn't be here and wanted to be here. Father God, we ask this in your name, we pray, amen.
Amen.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance-
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic-
For which stands one nation-
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you. Row call, please.
Good evening, mayor and council, before we begin tonight's meeting, I need to state Councilmember Cruz will be joining this special meeting by Zoom, utilizing the reasonable accommodation under Attorney General's opinion 23-1002 of the Brown Act, and with that, row call is completed, and all members are present.
Thank you. Participation is invited. If you wish to be heard on any item on the agenda, including any item on the consent calendar, please indicate by filling out a speaker request card and hand it to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being addressed. If special accommodations were necessary or required, a forty-eight hour notice must have already been given to the city clerk. Code of Ethics. As your elected governing board, we will remember the code of ethics that we voluntarily unanimously approved. During this meeting, we will treat each other and the public with patience, civility, and courtesy. Decisions made tonight will be in the benefit of the Barst community and not for personal gain. Review and approval of agenda. This is to the governor. This is the time, this is the time for members of the governing board to call for rearranging the order of the agenda, adding items to or removing items from the agenda, or removing items from the consent column for discussion under separate actions. Items may only be added to the agenda as allowed by state law, including Government Code Section 549, 54.2 subdivision B, allowing merger items to be added by majority vote, and allowing items that arose to the city's attention after the agenda posting deadline, but which require immediate action, to be added by a two-thirds vote of the council members present at the meeting, or if less than two-thirds of the council members are present, a unanimous vote of those present. I want to entertain a second, as well as a motion. Vote, please.
Councilmember Cruz, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion is passed unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, business action items. Approval of the reinstated municipal services agreement between Los Coyotes, Van of Chula, and Copino Indians, and the city of Barst, our representative is city attorney Andrew Chirrod. Andrew? As well as Matthew Summers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before you tonight is the consideration of a restated municipal services agreement. The- The objectives of tonight are to lay out what is the project before you, to clarify what the current legal landscape is for projects of this type, and then the objective, the meeting is to consider approval of the restated municipal services agreement. So, what is the project? The project M is kind of two concepts here. One, it is the buildings and what will be, could be constructed as a casino. But more importantly, what is before you as the project for your consideration is the municipal services agreement. When we talk about the current legal landscape, we'll be going into the fee to trust land conveyance, and that's a concept under Indian law to deal with taking land that a tribe purchases and then asks the Department of Interior, Bureau of Indian Affairs, to place that land into conservatorship or in trust. So, the fee part is owning a piece of property in fee. Turning it into trust land is then, it becomes a held by the United States on behalf of the tribe. And there is what's called the two-part determination, and that has to do with the Bureau of Indian Affairs making a, seeing the application from the tribe and answering two questions. First, will this benefit the tribe? And second, will it be detrimental to the local community surrounding that proposed trust lands? That process also has a governor veto provision, where the governor looks this over, Governor State of California, and so we'll talk about that a little bit. And then we'll also talk about the new regulations. There is a regulation promulgated just last spring that calls into question, in fact prohibits, revenue sharing. So, the prior way that the city had entered into two previous versions of the municipal services agreement was to take the proper, or take the responsibility of providing police and fire services and in exchange get a percentage of revenue, like a tax. Well, these new regulations say there can be no revenue sharing. And so, in conversations with the Bureau of Indian Affairs, they very clearly said that looks, the prior MSAs look too much like a gaming compact, which is the only way that you can do a revenue share. And so, then the Bureau of Indian Affairs goes back to that first of the two questions, and say this is in the best interest of the Indian tribe, and therefore, they would not be approving the municipal services agreement. That caused us to do the restated version here. That's why we're here. This slide is what we'll be discussing in the next few minutes in a nutshell. So, again, we're here to consider the approval of a contract between the Los Coyotes tribe and the city regarding funding by the tribe for services to provided by the city. This is a funding agreement decision. This is not a decision on the size, shape, location, things of those things. This is not like a planning commission approval, completely different. Instead, this is you acting in your capacity as an organization that has police and fire services that can be provided, and you're basically agreeing to provide those services for a certain amount of money. Prior municipal service agreements have been agreed upon between the city and Los Coyotes. In 2004, there was initial MSA, and then in 2006, there was an amended version of that, and in 2020, a second amended version of that. And then again, in 2024, spring of, the- the regulations, federal regulations changed to prohibit the ability to do revenue share. So, a little bit more of some law and history here to kind of get our minds focused on what it is, what kinds of casinos there are, in Indian casinos there are. There's basically, we think of as three types. An on reservation type, where the gaming facility is literally on a reservation land. There are, there's another process called the restored lands process. Through that process, there's a similar way to go about seeking recognition and the ability to have lands put aside by the federal government, and then casino built on top of that land. And then, we think of as an off reservation, or the two-part determination, where lands are placed in trust. And each of those are three different ways, under federal law, in which casinos can be built. With the off reservation type, under 25 USC, 2719B1A, there's a two-part determination, as I mentioned. First, that land, the way that the two items to be determined are, if the land purchased by a tribe and taken into trust to the Department of Interior, and then gaming is allowed on that newly acquired land, whether that would be in the best interest of the Indian tribe? And second, would this not be detrimental to the surrounding community? The purpose of the two-part test is, version of this, it is for tribes that have, they have a reservation. It's just their reservation is not in a place geographically that is going to be economically feasible to do the economic activities in which they would like to do. And so, the applicant tribe, Los Coyotes tribe, they're, they are located in northern San Diego County, and there is not a road that goes by their reservation that would provide economic advantage to them. And you may hear, there's two members here, the chairman's here tonight, Chairman Jefe Rosa, and then another member from the, called the developer in this process. It's a tribe, another tribe that would be helping out with the development of this, that has experience with developing casinos. You might hear from the chairman how this, their location in northern San Diego County is not conducive to a casino, or not conducive to frankly, much, if any, economic development. And so, it's a, this, this law was put together by Congress, and as the Bureau of Indian Affairs Gaming Director, Paula Hart, put it in a conversation that we had, this is precisely the kind of tribe that Congress had in mind when it created this law, which was to benefit those tribes that were economically disadvantaged because of their geographic location so remote from other population centers. In the two-part determination, this is the actual text, and I've highlighted the important parts, that it is in the best interest of the Indian tribe and its members, that the development would not be detrimental to the surrounding community, but only if the governor of the state in which the gaming activity is to be conducted concurs in the secretary's determination. So, the processes here are that the tribe makes an application to the Bureau of Indian Affairs. The Bureau of Indian Affairs then talks with state and local officials and does its analysis. And so, part of this meeting is part of that process of understanding whether or not the city sees that this is going to be not detrimental to the surrounding community. And so, if the, the city determines that this is not, that this will be detrimental to the surrounding community, and then that would be carried back to the Bureau of Indian Affairs, and the secretary would not be able to make these determinations that they need to make. A little more law on this. Can the city regulate the site? Well, currently, yeah. Because it's located in the city, you do have zoning powers over this area, the land that's being considered. You do, your local laws will, or do apply currently. But can it, once it's put into trust? No, you will no longer be able to have zoning power on the site. You will no longer be able to have your ordinances of any other type apply on that land. That is then sovereign territory of the tribe. And so, this is a prohibition under federal law. This isn't something that you're agreeing to, to give up that power. This is the federal government saying that when land is put in trust, it is part of now the sovereign territory of that tribe. City control over the trust lands? Yeah, the city ordinances will not be applicable on trust lands. And so, you, the city will not have control over that property. However, the tribe can agree to impose certain conditions on itself. And indeed, in the version of the MSA, that is revised MSA, restated MSA that's before you, the tribe has already agreed that when those lands are put into trust, that certain aspects of zoning will be, they will abide by that. And those namely are considerations about businesses involving- And those namely are considerations about businesses involving adult entertainment and nudity. They've agreed to not allow those to occur on site. They've agreed that uses related to cannabis would not be allowed on site, and uses related to service stations, filling stations, would not be allowed on site. So next, introduce the players again. Los Coyotes Tribe of, is out of northern San Diego County, and I'll leave any more introduction to the chairman. But there are about 400 members in the tribe, about 150 live on the reservation, and Chairman Chafarosa is here this evening. The developer portion of this is a group called Little River Holdings. They're with a, relating to a tribe out of Michigan, who are very experienced in the development of Indian gaming facilities. And just like any other landowner that wants to build a commercial facility, it's very common for tribes to then partner up with an experienced developer. And so that's why, in this context, we refer to Little River Holdings as the developer of this. Oh, and it's Ben Greit, who is here this evening, and who will be speaking in a moment about this. The site we're talking about is located between Lenwood and just south of Mercantile Way on Lenwood. And, and as you can see, zooming in there, the parcel in particular is a series of three parcels that, just south of Mercantile, that are currently completely vacant and have been considered for quite some time, about 20 years, as a site of where the Coyotes would be placing a casino. And that location, currently vacant, has had a environmental analysis done on it through the federal environmental aspect, and there, I've got two big binders here of analysis that's gone on under NEPA, the National Environmental Protection Act. And that analysis has been ongoing, not due to anything that you are doing, and not because of anything under California law. This, that analysis is under NEPA because it is a federal requirement to do so. And so the federal environmental protection law is being used to address that. And so the, the step that we're at right now with, with this, is the tribe needs to seek from several federal agencies, different components, the first being the fee to trust acquisition, and then the two-part test by the Bureau of Indian Affairs Secretary to make those two determinations. Will putting this casino with these conditions on it be in the best interest of the Indian tribe and its members? And will this be not detrimental to the surrounding community? And surrounding community here does not just mean Barstow, it means 25 miles or so around the land. And that's the federal requirement and determination that they make. And then there will need to be a federal approval of a gaming management contract, and then also in, need to be seeking approval of a gaming compact with the State of California. Those components, not before you tonight, and will not be before you tonight, at all. What is before you, and what is your ability to weigh in on this, has to do with essentially those issues that are raised through the environmental process and otherwise, and have been raised over the years, to address what impacts you see on the city. And so those have been integrated into the municipal services agreement, and over the years, and now tonight, putting that into a restated version to identify whether or not the funding is adequate. So here, the, breaking apart, the two-part determination a little bit more, so one of the things that the Department of Interior needs to analyze is the impact on other nearby Indian tribes. They define nearby as tribes with reservation or trust land within 25 miles of the project site. They have made the determination that there are no Indian, other Indian tribes within 25 miles of the project site. And there are other tribes that may have historical, or ancestral, or also called Aboriginal rights, things of that nature. Those are not at issue. And that is under consideration, under this version of, of the law. What is under analysis with the Bureau of Indian Affairs is whether or not there are tribes with reservations or trust lands within 25 miles. The two-part test, again, best interest of the Indian tribe and its members, and whether this is not detrimental to the surrounding community. And then finally, that last bit on there, can't underscore this enough, the governor, Governor Newsom, and the California Secretary of Indian Affairs needs to evaluate this and to see, and see if the governor concurs, whether or not this is in the best interest of, of both the tribe and the surrounding community. So this new regulation that came out February 21st and became effective a month later, it does clarify what amendments to what are called gaming compacts, and gaming compacts determine what kind of revenue goes to the state. And this is basically a limitation on, on the ability of states to, to tax tribes, or impose fees or other assessments. And the interpretation now with this new regulation from BIA is that our former version of the MSA would have violated the new regulations, and therefore, we could not participate in the revenue sharing. Therefore, we need to come up with a different method of analyzing what revenues the city would receive to provide those police and fire, public works and other services. And so that took a reworking of the, the economics of an agreement. And so, does this mean that the city, or that the State of California can no longer regulate gaming activities? No, the state can regulate gaming activities, just not the city. And so the state can regulate the minimum age of patrons, the transportation of gaming devices and equipment, and the exclusion of certain patrons. The city can't do that. The tribe, however, can voluntarily regulate who would be on the gaming floor, and indeed, they have done so in the MS, not in the MSA, they've done so through a separate resolution that they've independently adopted. Knowing that that might be of a concern, they're looking, they foresight to look out, and have adopted this resolution that states that they would, that patrons under 21 years of age would not be on the gaming floor. Another question that might have come up was, can the tribe use gaming revenue to fund city infrastructure? Yeah. And the reason they can do that is because there is that direct connection between the gaming activity building this, this building, and the, the infrastructure that would be required to do it, and that revenue. So as I mentioned before, in the environmental impact statement, which is available online through a website that, gives all the sections of, of that, and that is mentioned, I believe it's in both the staff report, it's definitely in the, in the restated MSA. And then we do have hard copies of that as well, both in City Hall. And so that, in that document, there was this project that was analyzed, and this is called the Alternative B Reduced Casino Hotel Complex. And this shows a 10-story hotel structure and a 165,000 square foot gaming building. And so off to the right-hand side here, you can see the casino building, and then in the, off to the, kind of the center of the right-hand side, there is a, the hotel tower that would stick up from that. There are 1,400-plus parking spaces in a parking field there, that it's not a high-rise or tower parking structure. This is all flat parking. And the, the building itself would house a number of facilities. So in this Alternative B, there's approximately casino floor of 57,000 square foot, and then another 130,000, 120,000 square feet of ancillary support, restaurant, nightclub, meeting room space, surrounding all of that. The hotel is about a 100,000 square foot hotel structure, and all of that, of course, is what went into Alternative B. Alternative A was a larger structure, both, it was oriented a different way, but again, that is not what the tribe is intending to build, and they have said so in a letter to us, and the analysis under the restated MSA takes into account that it is the reduced complex that would be built. So why, why is all this environmental analysis? Well, because it's a federal, a project that deals with the federal government, the federal government requires environmental analysis, and so the EIS, environmental impact statement, was required of that. And that was done on all four of these alternative projects. A, the large casino, B, the reduced casino, C, a casino on the reservation, and D, a campground on their reservation. And again, this wasn't an analysis on what are the impacts of a casino, this is what are the impacts of economic development opportunities that are available for the tribe. And so that's why there are these four that go from a very large casino to a casino on their reservation, to camping on their reservation. And so looking at those last two, those were analyzed and determined to be unavailable, not only because of environmental issues, but also because it didn't achieve the goals of providing true economic development. There is, and so the MSA comes into play here, municipal services agreement comes into play, because it is there to mitigate impacts that are identified through the environmental impact analysis process. There is no sequel on this project, again, because it is a federal project, if this were, if, like with any other hotel, that the city would be dealing with, because it would be going through your planning commission at that point, there would be sequel. On this one, there is not, because it is a federal project. So in the environmental impact statement, it is clearly identified that the tribe has agreed to compensate the city annually for potential perceived impacts related to development of a casino hotel complex on the project site. In turn, the city's agreed to support the tribe, to take the project site into trust, and to develop a casino project, and the development of a casino project, complex on the site. Again, this is not an approval by the city of size, shape, configuration of the site. That is, once it gets put into trust, that is a determination by the, the tribe itself. But it is of the, roughly the size, shape, configuration of what has been shown and analyzed under Exhibit B. So what are those impacts that we can charge? And just like with any other developer, when there are impact fees on, that are established by the city, then it is not a revenue sharing issue, under the eyes of the Bureau of Indian Affairs. And so our development impact fee are, are fees that are both included in the MSA, and are fees that would be legitimately imposed on, on the tribe. I put this big estimated on here because it's dangerous when attorneys start doing math. And I put this together, and it is truly there.
All right.
Right. This, this amount, 9881, or 719, is not something that we're finding, it's an estimate. And so in the revised MSA, restated MSA, it stated that those development impact fees that are in place at the time of the project development, those will be imposed. And the only way we can get a more current estimate is to take the actual plans that will be, that will be submitted by the, by the tribe, and they're actually not submitted to the city as much as they are shown to the city, to say, these are the calculation. Because this is independent nation status here, they will have the approval power of the, the square footage and the size and the shape and everything. They would then ask, through the MSA, they have asked the city's building department to basically manage the, to ensure, they're hiring the city as a contractor to, to look at the plans, to ensure that the contractor is building them in the right way. The codes that would be imposed, the, the tribe has, again, adopted on its own, adopted through a resolution, they have adopted the California Building Code. They were not required to, but they chose to, and that will then ensure that the codes that are applicable everywhere else in Barstow will also be applicable on the trust lands. So we will not have some project that is, is of a lesser quality construction, because they don't have to abide by the same laws. In fact, they've adopted the exact same codes that are applicable throughout California, and that are applicable within the city of Barstow. Some other impact costs, there is kind of a, I don't want to say it's a myth, because it is, it's a very complicated matter of who's responsible for what laws, and who's responsible for enforcement on Indian lands, and, and it actually varies state to state. And this, there's a very long history about it, and there was a, a law adopted in the 1950s that set out a number of states, California is one of them, where police do have, local police have the same power and authorities on Indian land, and that is what's called concurrent jurisdiction. The, the tribe can also have tribal police, but at this point, Los Coyotes does not have tribal police, and so they're asking the city to provide policing on, on the, the trust lands. And so when that was done, in preparation of this revised MSA, where we now have to think about things in terms of, well, what's it actually going to cost the city to do that? So we worked with the chief to outline what it is that Chief Espinoza believes is, would be required to adequately police this type of facility. And so looking at Alternative B, that size, shape configuration, knowing where it is and what it would be, came up with a 24/7 coverage program here that would essentially mean a three officer detail with one supervisor. That would then mean, to make that coverage on a daily basis throughout the week, would mean four shifts. would mean four shifts, would mean 17 officers. And these would be new officers. And so a fully burdened rate here, looking at operating costs, the salaries, the, the capital equipment of unit, of patrol cars and body cameras, et cetera, throwing in money there for dispatch and an administrative charge to oversee all of that. That is $3 million and $84,535. So that is a, a figure that is stated in the restated MSA as an actual cost that's essentially the baseline. And that would be adjusted annually. And if there were additional costs on top of that over time, if there were additional costs such as a special event, then those would be charged at the then rate as well. So a question that might come up is what happens when the MO, when the MOU with the Peace Officers Association means that rates go up? Well, then as the city's rates go up, then to, it turns around and charges the tribe more. And that's been agreed to in the restated MSA. Next, fire impact costs, same situation here. The big costs associated with fire station, however, or fire district, however, have to do with some pretty big ticket items for two public safety vehicles, a ladder truck and a fire engine. And then where are we going to put that, those vehicles? So built into this is then costs associated with a fire station, costs associated with a ladder truck and a fire engine. And in this list, beneath, beneath the ladder truck, beneath the fire engine, are the crews required to staff each of those apparatus. And so that results in an estimated funding issue of about 15.6 million initially. And then annually, about 4.8 million to staff those two pieces of apparatus. The, this is not making a determination, of course, as to if we are taking the, the fire station. And, but this is a determination that we're entering in an agreement on how such would be funded. And there's good reason for that. If we determine, we can't determine right now if we're taking it. We don't know where the land is that they are going to propose to give to us. And that's one of the requirements here is that the tribe would acquire roughly two acres, at least two acres, to provide the city with that, that land. The city would then, and this is sometime in the future, then make the determination if they want that land or if they want to house these two apparatus someplace else to service here. And that someplace else would be someplace close by. Again, that's a determination that would be made at a later date. It's not for discussion tonight. This is the funding of it alone. Now, the $7 million that's earmarked here, that would be roughly what a, a station would likely cost. But there's language in the restated MSA that if it, if the value of that were, the costs were less, then we would refund some of the money. If the costs were more, then the tribe would then provide a, a makeup, we might call it, check to provide the additional costs that, to the city for building such a structure. So in that way, the infrastructure costs would be at cost. The development impact fees, one-time estimated, I should have put estimated there on this chart. It's estimated right now to be just under $1 million. Final, and then the fire one-time costs, roughly 15.6 million. And then the annual costs for police and fire off to the right-hand side, roughly $8 million. So in that regard, the impacts to the city have been addressed. And for public safety, for other types of traditional public services, and there would not be an impact to the city. There is one other area that really deserves a little more attention. And that is a problem gambling fund. And so one impact that has been identified in the past is that by putting a casino in a, a city, there might be issues with problem gambling that would come up. And so this is a way to mitigate those impacts. And through a problem, problem gambling fund, it was, in the prior MSAs, it was identified as a, about $40,000 or would have been about $45,000 to create such a fund and such a program. And that, at that time, the city would be putting in $5,000 into that program. And the tribe would be putting 40,000 into that. However, that, those programs, we worked with the California Council on Problem Gambling, which is the same organization that you worked with almost 20 years ago now to develop the initial program. And talking with them today, they said, yeah, there's certain portions of that that are still applicable. There are others that we've got a better way now. The example is, in the original one, they were going to have radio ads and put public service announcements on radio. And I think everyone recognizes that there are more effective ways of different media types to get the message across than, than radio these days. It's just better bang for your buck to go with different types of either YouTube or TikTok-type reels, other types of ways to get the message across. And so Exhibit E to the restated MSA is an updated recommendation on that. And in that, there is a program to work with the schools. And so that would be effectively on a grant basis where each school would be given the ability to provide training in the school with a, an organization that really focuses on training the issues of problem gambling identification and recognition and in the 12th to, or seventh grade to 12th grade school curriculum. Of course, that would not be city imposing that on the school district. The school district would have to agree to participate. But here, the city is fighting to make that money available now so that it's available to address those impacts. On top of that, the budget for that has been updated from $40,000 to a minimum of $93,000. And the, the final version of that program would be adopted by the Tribal-City Advisory Committee. And so the restated MSA creates this, the TCAC Committee. And this committee is made up of four members from the city, four members from the tribe, and one member at-large. The member at-large is someone in the Barstow community that both the four members of the tribe, the four members of, from the city agree to appoint as that ninth member on this committee. The committee meets as frequently or infrequently as it needs to. There are some specific things it needs to meet at initially and talk about. One of them is this problem gambling program. And then it also serves there as a liaison committee to address any issues that might come up through, over the years and also provide advice on how to, how to use what is being called as the impact fund. And the tribe is agreeing to set some funds aside so that as issues do arise, there would be funds immediately available so that the TCAC could identify. And those monies put towards any future additional impacts. There was one request. So we've been, the last two months or so, we've had a couple of conversations with the Bureau of Indian Affairs. And there was one request that they had in particular relating to the design of the site, or not the design of the site, that relating to allowed uses on the site. And they wanted to make sure that the tribe could also have tribal meetings on-site and then also have tribal healthcare clinic on-site. And this is one of those ways, again, where the Bureau of Indian Affairs is effectively, and this is not something that the, the tribe was asking to do, but this is the way in which the BIA stands as, in many ways, a custodial role for the tribe to say, make sure you're fighting for these, these types of things. And so the BIA raised these issues. And so we've put into the revised MSA, where it wasn't there before in the prior MSAs, that indeed the, the tribe could have tribal business occur on-site. Meeting room set aside for tribal members to, to have tribal meetings. And then also, if they wanted to have a healthcare clinic on-site, that that would be allowed as well. I think with that, that covers everything that I thought of to say about this. Are there any questions from the council before we move on to public comment?
Well, I don't see anybody on the screen yet. So for no, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Rose?
So I, I just have a quick question for clarification. So right now, we would be providing the fire, bars, the police and the fire. But if the tribe were to choose to go and use their own, let's say, four years down the road, what happens to the existing employees that we would be employing for them?
Right. So those existing employees would either be absorbed into other city operations through, and as attrition happens through other members, more senior members leaving, those city employees would stay on. Or as the tribe is ramping up its own police force, members of the police department could, could go over to that, that new police force to be.
So my, I guess my question would be, because when we have, I'm used to seeing when we hire an employee and they're, let's say, grant-funded. That is put out there when, when we are advertising for that position. And it almost seems like familiar, similar to this, that if the, if the grant funding goes away, the position goes away. So the, the person that's applying for this position is aware that their job may go away. Because if we were to potentially absorb, let's say, 12 police officers and how many of the fire, one, two? At least seven, six, seven? Eight, nine, 10, 11? Quite a few, fire. That would be, I mean, where would we fund this? Let's say, four years down the road? I, I don't believe that at this point, that our budget could sustain that type of ongoing cost, period. So I, we would have to look at that. And then when we advertise that it is, that it is advertised as such, that if the funding goes away, the position goes away. And they probably, you know, or there would be bumping rights. But if they're the newest on, you know, on the, on the roster, you know, how does that, how does that play out?
So I think you hit it right on the head there with, those are details to work out through the hiring process to advise new hires of that and treat this effectively as grant-funded or treat it through the, the bumping right process.
If I could add, in addition to the union protections for all those employees that would have to be sorted through, the city would expect that we would have some time to do that transition. The tribe's not going to be able to stand a police department up from zero. That takes some time. And that would give us the time to sort out what that transition looks like. In particular, looking to, has there been other ancillary development in the area that can be relied on for additional funding to sustain the police force at the level that it's at, at that time? Or as may occur through attrition?
Right. And I guess my only other question would be on the impact of the costs for, for both. Because, you know, I, I heard that, you know, this is, we have to worry about the ongoing costs, costs of living for, let's say, five years out, 10 years out. And that analysis, I'm, I'm hoping would be part of this impact costs. Because, yes, there'll be raises, there'll be stepping columns, all the rights that is afforded to a representative position. But how many years out are we going to provide? Because, and, because what we're looking at is what, just this year? Or on analysis of the costs of this year or next year? Because it doesn't have really a year.
The costs for personnel?
Well, 12, yeah, 12 officers, for instance, on, on police. You know, it's, it's $1,306. That's the cost that I'm, we're seeing right now. Is that on current wages? Or is it a cost out of the next three years?
That's based.
As an example.
So the chief might be able to go into greater detail about this, but it's based on the current 2024 MOU and those costs. What's built into the revised or restated MSA is that as those costs escalate over the years, then what would be billed to the tribe would be the higher cost. So if, say, in the spring, the department negotiates a new contract, there would be a, a different cost.
Agreed. So this is current costs.
Correct.
But let's say the, the unit comes, let's say, two years down the road and this is all going, moving forward, or three years down the road when they're ready to, you know, to hire these people, we're ready. Let's say they get a 20% raise hypothetically. You know, that's, that's significant. And the tribe has agreed to, to whatever the cost is then, that that's what they would pay.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Portim, no more.
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, Andrew, back to the two-part determination for the, where we talk about the best interest of the tribe and its members and would it be detrimental to the surrounding community? But it goes to the governor for his endorsement. Why would he not, based on, what would be some reason why he would not support that? Something like this?
That's a good question.
I mean, because, and the reason I ask that, because he's not here. There's, the folks that's in this community and surrounding the communities are here. So they would know what's the best interest of their community. Why would the governor, and I know it has to go to him, but why would he not support something like this if the people of the surrounding community and the community says yes? Just, just a hypothetical question. I, I, and if you can answer it, I mean, has he said no to others that, that you may know of? And what was the reasoning?
I, I don't know of any that they have expressly rejected. The governor's office has been critical of one other casino recently. It's up in Northern California in an area that's frankly very impacted in Sonoma County. And they made comment about that. And it was becau, I, I think in large part because, well, it was done under a different paradigm. It was done under Restored Lands version. And so it's a different type of process altogether. And then the governor's office made comment on that. And so I, I think the, it has to do with a very site-specific analysis. And here, Barstow is in a very unique situation of being quite isolated in a very open plain here, immediately adjacent to a major thoroughfare. The impacts are much, much different.
Yeah. And, and I get that. It was just a question. But I, I do have. It was just a question, but I do have some questions for the Indian tribe guys when they come up. But I want to hear what the public comments are first, before I address those. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hernandez?
Thank you. I was confused by a statement that says, "The project has already been studied in environmental review and statement prepared and read 24 months earlier for a substantial identified use as determined and documented by the environmental review." I did read it. "Shall be exempt from the environmental review process." What threw me was the 24 months. Could you explain?
Certainly.
Yeah, because I'm thinking, this environmental report, the most current information as they've been adapting to, was 2014, which was 10 years ago. So I'm sure, I want to understand that the Bureau of Indian Affairs doesn't have a problem with a report that was started so long ago and applicable to our time.
Right.
And my issue, and the question is, in regards to traffic. And I'll get into that, you know, later. But if you could explain the 24 months, I would appreciate that.
And are you reading from, then, is that exhibit?
It's on...
Is that exhibit H? No.
No, it's this.
It's page 53, which is exhibit J.
The agenda.
Yeah.
Which is the environmental review standard resolution by the tribe.
Prior comments, yeah, recent, so...
Yeah, so what you're reading from is, exhibit J is the tribe agreeing that they will have tribal environmental analysis. And so there will be essentially tribe land sequo. California sequel will not apply on that.
No, I understand that, right.
But what they have done is said, any additional development that might occur that is not going through federal, that has not been studied previously in the past 24 months, would need to go through the type of environmental analysis that's otherwise outlined. So what you're reading from are two, you're reading one of the two major exemptions. The two major exemptions are, if there's been environmental analysis in the past 24 months, and if there is a project that's currently, at that time, going through environmental analysis under the federal standards. And so it's not making, what you're reading from is not make a statement, there has been environmental analysis in the past 24 months, but I'll get to that in a second. What it's making a statement on, what you're reading from, is what the tribe will do in the future. Once they have tribal lands, then they'll have a tribal version of an environmental analysis law on their land. And they don't need to, they're voluntarily doing that.
Okay, thank you.
You do raise an important comment, though, a concern, that is the federal government okay with that environmental document? And they did, as things have continued to go, they did require some additional analysis. And that additional analysis, I reviewed it today, got it today and reviewed it today. And the conclusion is that, yeah, there's been environmental, or there've been, there was environmental analysis done, there's been some time for, since that was done. And in that time, they asked for additional environmental analysis, which in and of itself required the delay of additional time as the environmental analysis was done. And that analysis was done on even the larger project, the alternative A. And under that, this supplemental environmental statement came to the same conclusion. There is no impact, environmental impact, that has not been mitigated.
Okay, I just want to make sure. If I went, okay, we go along and we don't ask the right questions, and then we have a stumbling block. Because my other question, too, has to do with the governor. Has there been any contact or any communication? Councilman Noble asked, well, any problems? But I also want to know, well, where are we now? Because I read the letter from the attorney for the tribe, and it says concurrents. And I'm going, we haven't been informed of any information in regards to that. So I have a problem when somebody puts something in a letter as if it's happening, right, at the city, and then the governor in concurrents, when I don't know that that has occurred. So that's my other question.
Yeah, so the timing of that, when the governor, truly, the governor, when it goes literally on his desk, that happens after BIA makes essentially a preliminary determination. That hap, the BIA's preliminary interpretation doesn't happen until after there's a restated MSA. So by taking action tonight, that would put into process then an application, finally and formally going to the BIA. The BIA would look it over and say, okay, now it's time to get the governor's concurrents. It would go through the tribal affairs secretary in the governor's branch. The governor would then receive it and look at it and make the determination whether or not they agree as well. And then it's back to the BIA to make the transfer from fee to trust. So the, to answer your question, so that, those are all the steps that need to happen. So your question is kind of like, well, what have we done to get there? Well, it's not up to us, the city, to initiate that conversation with the governor. And frankly, it's, from what I understand, it's been a little premature for the tribe and the developer to initiate that. Because until they, the governor, until the tribe really knows that the city is going to go through with the restated MSA, it's a little premature. That being said, excuse me, I did participate in a phone call, Zoom call, last week with the tribal affairs secretary. And I believe there's two members in their department. And they were, they were aware this was coming, but they didn't know details. And so it was, it was a Zoom meeting, and it was, it was basically a get-to-know-you meeting, as those often go. And the chairman, he participated as well in that meeting. And it was a good way for, and the vice chairman. It was a good way, I think, for, you know, to break the ice, to let them know this is coming and if there were any questions. And they were receptive to hearing that, oh, this is coming, okay, great, these are our things, and so...
That's my question, because we, as a city, have never been against any casino. So the clarification is, the question is, we have done our part. We have looked out for our community. The mitigation is the public safety and the traffic issues as far as the mitigation, that we're seeing the effect to our community, correct?
Right.
So I just want that out there in the public and to make sure that we are asking the right questions, that we need to, to ensure our part, right? Not that everybody wants, everybody wants, and then nobody asks. And then future councils find themselves, you know, with difficulties. And I know, I agree with Councilwoman Rose, because that's what I looked at, that future costs. We're not talking now, and that is in the MSA. So I would, you know, that the public reads and sees, yeah, it's not, oops, now. It's future, we have to look out for future costs in our, you know, in our budget.
If I could add one more point. So on the governor's office, what we also expect is, once the council has, if the council, and once the council has approved the MSA, then that's our go-ahead signal at the staff level, the city manager, myself, Mr. Jared, and the council in the right way, to reach out to the governor's office through the process to explain why this would be important for the city's community, if that's the council's direction. So that the governor doesn't just hear it from others, but hears it directly, what this would mean for the community. Piggybacking on earlier advocacy by the city before other, earlier governors on similar issues.
Okay, so I have a question, Andrew.
Sure.
Says prior Barstow MSAs with the Los Cuidades, 2004, 2006?
Yes.
2020?
Yes.
It's interesting, now it's 2024, what was 2025? What's different now?
So, a couple of differences. The biggest difference is the federal government changing its tolerance for the city receiving revenue from the casino. And so previously, there was a portion of the gross revenue, I'm sorry, net revenue, would be coming to the casino. And you think of that as basically a tax that the city has placed on them to get a certain amount, a percentage. And the city was going to be happy with that because it could then get whatever that money is. And as the casino was more successful, well, the city would be more successful, too. All, you know, boats rising with the tide. Well, the federal government didn't like that. Not just to you, but didn't like that nationwide. And so a new regulation came into effect that prohibited revenue sharing, except under gaming compacts. And the conversation that we had with the BIA director on that, Office of Indian Gaming, made it very clear that if that was in an MSA, it would not be approved. And that would be rejected. So why now? Because of the new regulation.
Okay, second question. So how will this impact an existing MSA we have with another tribe?
So this MSA would not have any direct impact on another tribe.
Okay. Councilwoman Rose?
Thank you. I'm going to go, I have a couple of more questions, but I want to go back to a question I had in regards to the impact cost for the police and fire. So it dawned on me that, okay, so I'm just going to go with the 12 officers of the 1,306. Is that entry level, based on entry level salaries? Or how did we come to that? Like, if somebody comes in as a new police officer, they start at, let's say, step one range, step one. Was this based on entry levels?
You know what, I'm not 100% sure if she did top step officer or A step. I believe...
Who's she?
If Sidney, our finance director, did that or not, I don't have the answer to that. And I can't recall at the time.
Either, so it could be top step?
It could be top step. It could be top step so that the bid is higher, and it grows as, because it takes five years to go from top, from the entry level A step to top step police officer. So usually, when we bid out, we don't, we give a range, and then we bid out the high wage salary. So that we come in under, you know, that you grow to that number.
Right.
So, but I'm just not 100% sure that she did that.
And she's not here tonight, correct, at her office?
No, no, she's not.
Would you be able to find out, let us know collectively, just out of curiosity?
Sure, absolutely.
You'll let us know by when?
Tomorrow, I can talk to her first thing in the morning.
Perfect, thank you so much. My other question would be, I did have a question, and I should have asked this initially. Are there any conflicts with any of us elected officials on having this conversation, having a dialogue? I think you would have already disclosed it, but I want to...
I'm not aware of any, but I'll defer to the council to let us know. I'm not aware of any councilwoman who has any conflict or Financial Interest or Political Reform Act or other legal conflict in voting on this matter. But, one second.
Thank you.
But I am not aware of any conflicts, but I ask any councilwoman who has any conflict to disclose any. If they have, then we analyze it.
Absolutely, so each one of us would have to say, and I will say, I have no conflicts, to have this dialogue, to move forward with any decisions. But I also want to know, because this, if this is passed, it's going to go through the planning commissioners as well, correct, for zoning?
No.
No.
No?
No.
Okay. Okay, I was...
Yeah, no.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, if this is approved by the city, and if it's approved by the Bureau of Indian Affairs, and it's approved by the governor, then only the tribe, it will be sovereign tribal land, and there will be no zoning power. So the project will never go through the planning commission.
Okay, thank you for that. So could we, can you ask each of us if there, you know, I'd like for this to be, you know, said, I have no conflict, Barbara Rose has no conflict. Anybody else?
I'll ask your colleagues, but I can't, you're legally obligated to declare any conflict you may have. I can't force you to say I have no conflict, but do as you will.
No, I have no conflict whatsoever.
Nope, unfortunately, I have no conflict. Didn't see this one coming.
It's an important question to ask, to be...
And I have no conflict.
And Councilmember Dyer Cruz on the phone?
I have no conflict either.
And that's certainly helpful to confirm for the community. If I could go back one step as well on the point about top step versus mid step versus bottom range, the MSA is clear that those were estimates and that their obligation is to pay whatever the actual cost is as each fiscal year occurs. So as officers rise through the ranks, from mid step to bottom step, to mid step to top step, the costs we are incurring, and thus the cost the tribe are paying, will go up, too.
Exactly, and I talked to, or I texted Sidney right now, and we did do top step.
Ah, perfect.
We did do top step officer.
Thank you.
Because we don't know who is going to be assigned out there, so we have to bid the top step. What if it's a C step officer or an E step officer? So we bid a top step.
Thank you for that. You know, I was just curious, because, you know, the numbers, I look at it, I'm like, okay, where are we with it? Just to understand where we came up with that number, so I appreciate that. And the only other thing that I wanted to add a little input is that, and you've answered it, is there's any plans eventually down the road, plans to meet with the governor? First of all, why would the governor say yes or no? It all depends hugely, I believe, on the variables that you said, but also on the outcome of this election. And I think that that impacts anybody's decision, especially our governor's, on which way he will move, on who wins the presidency of the United States. So that is, in a nutshell, without going into two weeks of conversation on what pros and cons on that. But, so it sounds like there is plans down the road, that there will be an appropriate time for the city to speak to the governor. And personally, I think the best impact is for the city to take a team to Sacramento to actually, and I don't know if it's with the tribe, but the best impact, because I've done it for many years, to go meet with the governor in Sacramento. You know, get on that schedule and face to face. That is the best way, I believe, that the city should be meeting with our governor.
And I think it's the right time, that would be the right choice.
So with that, we're going to go to a public comment. I'm going to start with the tribe, the tribe representatives, representative? Following this gentleman or these two gentlemen, then we're going to go to the general public comment. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, mayor, council, staff. My name is Raymond Chaperosa. I'm chairman for Los Cuidades Band of Quee and Copeno Indians. And I'm here to talk with you guys, meet with you. I'm here, we've been, this has been a 20-year process, and we have been working at this. I mean, just, I know we hadn't seen you guys in such a long time, but we have been working on this with BIA, with our lawyers, and it's been nonstop.
We appreciate that. I was about to say, since the '70s, but since 2004, so you're right, 20 years.
20 years, yeah. 20 years, yeah. Our tribe is located in northeast San Diego County, in a very mountainous area. We were isolated. We were a very poor tribe. And we, 20 years ago, we came and, oh, we met with the city and we knew that the, that what we needed for being a poor tribe, we knew that we needed some economic development and we're glad to team up with the, with the city. So we need to get the MSA signed so we can move this paperwork into the BIA's office. It's, we are, as the Rose said, that, you know, with the elections coming up, we are in need to move this pretty quick, but it's, it's been a long process. But we look forward to working with you guys. I mean, I know, I hear your concerns about what happens in the future and we, we want to be the, a team with you to, to continue this and to work with you. And that's, you know, we're definitely going to do that if this moves forward.
Well, we appreciate you for, you and your tribe for believing in Barstow, because Barstow definitely believes in economic growth, you know, building a better Barstow. And if you can contribute to our, our mission, goal, our vision on attaining and building a better Barstow, we would definitely welcome you to our community as well as the partnership. You can trust that if this does get approved and moving forward, the appropriate contact will be made with the governor's office and we will do our absolute best to make sure there's no rejection on the acceptance.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, Councilwoman Rose has a question?
Sir, thank you for being here. I do have a couple of simple questions. So have you had a tour of Barstow, just to look at our demographics, to see what Barstow is up and down Main Street, maybe to our local schools, just to get a better idea of what Barstow is all about?
Yes, I have. In fact, I was here on Sunday eating at the Casa Jimenez up here on Barstow Road. I was here, me and my brothers were having lunch here. But, yeah, we have, and I, in fact, I've had family that lived up here. I had a family member that passed away recently and we were here at the church down on Mount Nav also for the funeral. But, yeah, I have seen, yeah, I've been here quite a bit and, yes.
My deepest condolences to you and your family. So you do have ties to Barstow?
Yes.
Okay. And there is a lot of other great places to eat and so I encourage you to try them out. I don't want to shout them out because I don't want to offend one over the other, but we have some really good places to eat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Noble?
Thank you, Matt. I, I just had a, just a question and she kind of hit on it, but what, what made it interesting for you to choose Barstow? I mean, you could have picked any other place, but why did you pick Barstow?
Barstow, there's no other tribe around the Barstow area. If, anywhere you go into Southern California, you run into another tribe. And we didn't want to be in any, any other tribe's area, any, anything to bother them, to, to think that we're trying to take economic development from them. And that's why we chose Barstow.
All right. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Just seeing the one else on the screen here. You can count on us. We're looking forward to counting on you. Next?
Mr. Ben Greed is also with the tribe.
Welcome, Mr. Ben.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. My name is Ben Greed. I'm a vice president of business development for Little River Holdings. We are a tribally owned economic development corporation for the Little River Band of Ottawa Indians from Manistee, Michigan. And yes, that is a mouthful. I say it a lot. We have, we first developed a relationship, a friendship with Lost Coyotes Tribe about three years ago. And that relationship has evolved into us becoming the project development partner for them on this project. We have, one of the reasons for that is we have a long and deep background in casino development and casino management and operations, both of our own casino, Little River Casino Resort in Manistee, as well as other, other casinos. And our, our broader team includes expertise in structured finance and capital raising. And we've raised just over $40 billion for specifically gaming operations over the last 20 years. I am a 25-year resident of Southern California. I live reasonably close to the Lost Coyotes Reservation. I've been there. I can confirm that the reservation, while beautiful, is undevelopable. The utility infrastructure is little to none. The road infrastructure is inadequate. The housing stock is, is inadequate. And Mr. Jared pointed out that the two-part determination relies on two pillars. One is will it advantage the tribe and its members? And the other is, of course, the effect on the surrounding community. To take that first one, I think there is no doubt that this tribe is a disadvantaged tribe and that it will benefit from a casino project in Barstow. I think the tribe desperately needs, needs it. But taking the second part, as has been stated, there are no tribes in this area. There's no casino operation within 25 or even within 50 miles of here, which makes it uniquely situated. And I think that the benefits to Barstow and the, and its economy are significant. I just found out something that I just, I didn't even know about this. I found out this out just the other week, that a couple of miles further up the highway in Nevada, there is a city that has lots of casinos. I don't know if you guys knew that. I didn't. I just found that out. And every year.
You got us.
Thank you, Matt.
We just discovered it.
Yeah, yeah. I just, I just found out. But the point is that every year, you know, 100,000 people drive right through Barstow on their way to that city to spend money. And I think it's high time that we gave them a reason to stop here, spend some money here. After all, the money they spend is not just in the casino, it's in businesses. They've got to get gas at the gas station, they, they get a Gatorade at the, at the convenience store and they eat at some of the other restaurants that you mentioned in the area, retail stores and do some shopping and so on. So I think this project satisfies both of those two pillars nicely.
Yes, it does.
I think this is the fourth council, city council meeting that I've been to, sitting in the back corner over there over the last six months. And I've heard members of the community speak on this project. I've heard them express both their excitement for it and also their frustration with the amount of time that it's taken. And I understand that. Obviously, our involvement doesn't go back 18 years, 20 years, but we're aware of the timelines. But I would say that I think the project is as close to the finish line as it, as it ever has been. As has been stated, the Bureau of Indian Affairs has reviewed the application. We are in close and constant communication with them. The last piece that was missing was the MSA, which has been restated and revised. A lot of people have worked hard on that over the last six months to get it to where it is. One of the comments earlier I'd like to address was, you know, the timing of addressing the governor's office. We made a decision that it wasn't prudent to reach out to the governor's office until there was either agreement from the city or at least we were very close. So we made the decision to wait until the MSA was in close to its final form before doing that. We have reached out. We've had a phone call with the governor's office. It went well. It was well received. They are now fully aware of the project and the governor is, governor is awaiting the, the approval for, for him to sign. And to address Mayor Protem's question earlier, we're very confident that he will sign it. I can't think of a reason why he wouldn't because it meets criteria that it needs to meet and it checks all the boxes for him, namely job creation. We're talking about 1,000 jobs here, helping out a disadvantaged tribe. But Lost Coyotes is the archetypal disadvantaged tribe, benefiting the surrounding community, having the support of the city in question, which I think we have and hope we'll continue to have. And also capturing dollars that are, that are leaving California, quite frankly, and we can capture some of that back. I think this is a very good decision for him to make. We don't see any reason why he wouldn't be on board. And from Little River Holdings' perspective, you know, we're very excited to be able to help to facilitate this project and we would take you up on your offer to, to be present in the governor's office for a face-to-face meeting to talk about what this means, not only to the tribe, but to the town and the surrounding areas 25 miles out. So for all those reasons, I think this is a very good story and a very, very exciting project. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Additional public comment?
Yes, our first speaker is Mr. Ray Jaime. Our next speaker is Mr. Tim Silva.
Welcome, Mr. Tim Silva.
Thank you, mayor, council, staff, attorneys. This is a good MSA, very good MSA, and I encourage a 5-0 vote. That's going to be very important as they go to Washington. The limit for 23 acres, plenty of land, will limit the development and leave more land for Barstow development. The revenues in the reinstated MSA, I had one question there. So we identify all of them within the reinstated MSA, the fire, the PD. We also identify the 0.5% impact fund. And then we have an Exhibit C, which is money is to be paid by the tribe. And those are all moved over to the Exhibit C except for the impact fund. Is there, and I know don't answer now, but is there a reason the impact fund doesn't go to the Exhibit C? Now a little bit of history. We've been to Sacramento and I, I know because a lot of people think past councils have done nothing, but I actually wasn't on the council. I was the president of the chamber and a compact has been to Sacramento. It wasn't this compact. It was a dual casino with the Lost Coyotes and Big Lagoon. And I remember because the, the tribe was there fasting as they begged for that compact to be approved. It did not get approved. And as I sat in the committee meeting, one of the arguments was we were too soon. Get your job done in Washington. And I'm, I'm not saying that's the proper order. I just want to share history with what we were told as we sat there at the committee meeting, asking for them to consider this, get it out of committee and go to the floor. It did not. It stayed in committee and never got out of committee. But they felt there's a proper order and that we were in Sacramento too soon. However, it did have the governor's approval. It was the assembly that we were trying to get out of, or committee and assembly that we were trying to get out of and get it to the floor. And we also made many trips to Washington and a lot of the exhibits that you brought up are expired. That's Washington's fault. They keep dragging their feet and dragging their feet. Every time we sat down with the assistant secretary, they would do nothing. So it's Washington's fault for these expired exhibit, these aged exhibits, and the tribe has updated them at least twice that I'm aware of. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that.
Our next speaker is Mr. Lawrence Dale.
Welcome, Mr. Dale.
Thank you, Paul. Good evening, council, city manager, attorneys. I remember that 20 years has passed. I was here when we started. I want to address two or three things that have been asked.
Yeah, move the mic over some so we can hear you. There you go.
I want to address two or three things that have been brought up. One of the most important things that you as a council can do is be unified. You've got to stick together and you've got to show support 100% all the time, not part of the time, not half the time, but all the time. There's people out in this community and also other tribes that do not want this to happen. And if you don't know that, you're mistaken. There's a lot of, lot that can be done by this council and you can do it by conversation with the community and staying in touch with the community unified. All of you, five, have to be unified. You can't take two of you or three of you. Takes all of you. Say, I don't remember anything where anything's ever been turned down. I do. Because we went to Sacramento and testified. I testified as mayor and then it's vice mayor testified. And when we got done, the chair of the committee we were talking to says, now there's somebody else came in from Barstow that said they wanted to talk. And then it wasn't, we did have somebody else come in. I'm not going to say who it was, but it was one of the, the people that all of you know. When we got done testifying and that fellow got done testifying, the chair of the committee said, there's five of you on a committee and only four of you and maybe just three agree. And if you can't agree, why would you expect us to approve it? You have to be, I can't impress upon you any stronger that you have to be unified. I heard about the tribe being poor. The tribe is extremely poor and I was honored to be mayor during the time that Catherine Seaver-Sobel was the chairman of the Lost Coyotes. She was a very important lady and she.
Mr. Lawrence.
Lived that tribe.
Your time is up. Your three minutes is up.
All right. Anyway, unified, stay unified. If you can't stay unified, need to get out.
Thank you, sir. Loud and clear, Mr. Dale.
Our next speaker is Mr. Rodney Brand.
Welcome, Mr. Brand.
Hello, you guys. Yeah, good evening, mayor, city, city council, city staff in my hometown of Barstow. I'm Rodney Brand Jr., current city planning commissioner for the city of Barstow and lifelong resident here in Barstow. So when I was a child in the 90s, I heard a lot of talk about the possibilities of a casino in Barstow. Now here it is again, nearly three decades later, I hope for beneficial negotiations to Barstow, along with actions and implementations this time, this time around. Without, without competition, there is no challenge or progress. Just like in the world of racing, there is no victory without competitors. Without stress, there is no motivation. The casino's investment in Barstow brings the demand for affordable housing that is, that this community deserves and more employment it needs. We need economic development in our community and our city's obligation to operate unbiased and work with any and all investors to drive progress forward and build a better, a better Barstow now and for our future. I am pro-business for Barstow and in absolute support. I hope you, mayor and council, support this additional investment to Barstow as well. We, the community of Barstow, need more choices and options and exceptional leaders to manage our potential growth to success. Thank you and I hope you vote for the best of what Barstow needs. Thank you.
So noted. Thank you, Mr. Brand.
And our last speaker is Ms. Marsha Weisma.
Welcome, Marsha Weisma.
Thank you very much. I'm going to share with you a little fun with you councils tonight. I think you deserve it. This is my friend. He's called the Little Eagle Volder. I think you deserve it. This is my friend. He's called the Little Eagle Volder. He reminds all of you in the community to vote local, state, and federal elections. Remember, it is up to you. Tonight, we have a very important election coming, and I have qualified the four mayor candidates in alphabetical order. They are Carmen Hernandez, Vivian Jordan, Ben Rosenberg, and Tim Silva.
Point of order, please.
Yes, would you have point of order?
Point of order is, is this tied to what we're talking about right now? Because if you can tie it into
It's just a general comment.
No, no, it actually needs to tie into, this is a special meeting, so it needs to tie into the topic at hand, please.
Casino.
The casino.
That is twice, and we should be told before we come up to the podium. We goofed up again, Miss Andrea, and that's not right. Shut down. Personal voice away. This was fun for you. Sorry.
Next speaker, please.
That is all the comments we have on this agenda item.
Okay. I have one additional comment from Councilwoman Rose on my screen.
Thank you. First of all, Matthew, can you explain to Ms. Weisma what just occurred? Because we didn't shut her down, but can you explain the process?
Yeah, happy to. So, the Brown Act requires the city to take public comment on items on the agenda and only items on the agenda at a special meeting. Today is a special meeting, so we will take public comment on item one, the Lost Coyotes MSA item, and then when we get to it, item two, the closed session. That is all we will be taking public comment on. General public comment regarding matters not on the agenda is on the agenda at the regular meetings, of which the next regular meeting is Monday, November 4th, here at 7:00 PM.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Matthew.
So, I do have a question for the attorneys. So, Mr. Silva raised a valid question as to why the reason that the impact fund is not in Exhibit C. Is that an oversight, and if so, we can correct that, correct?
Right. And I'm glad you're asking the questions, and now I don't have to interrupt and explain why, what I think needs to be explained about Mr. Silva's comment. Was it an oversight? I hate to say that I made a mistake, but I don't think it's an oversight. If you want to put it there, that's fine. I'll tell you that Exhibit C is not referenced anywhere else in the agreement. The body of the agreement is what stands, and the references to Exhibits F and G, those two in particular dealing with police and fire, those are the biggest ones to make sure we have good reference in coordinating the body with the Exhibits Two. Exhibit C, I always looked at as, I was working on the drafting of this, as a, just a clarifying list. The thing about the impact fund is it's not a discreet amount of money, and it's not even, I mean, it's there, and it will be treated as a well to draw from if an impact does come up. So, it's, I always looked at it when we were looking at how to revise this as a kind of an emergency bank account, savings account, that if we need to draw on something, an impact comes up, well, it's already there, set aside. Not that it is monies that would be, get to a certain amount, and well, there's this money here, let's just draw from it. There's a whole process to go through. So, in that regard, yeah, it could be put on Exhibit C, and I see Mr. Silva's point, and I don't think it would harm the agreement by putting it there. But I don't think it's an oversight in the sense that if we didn't have it there, it wouldn't still be a thing that was valid.
Thank you. So, if we wanted to add it as a council, we could make that part of the motion.
Certainly.
Thank you for that. And thank you, Mr. Silva, for pointing it out. That's what, that's where our experience comes from. I appreciate it.
Councilwoman Hernandez?
Thank you. My comment in regards to the MSA, I want to thank Andrew for the merge because it clarified a lot of questions that I had, having read all the agreements that we had had. And I said, "Well, it has this and it has that." So, when I saw the merge, I said, "Okay, that's been clarified," so thank you. I also like the fact that there is no taxpayer dollars involved in regards to public safety, because the project is the one that's creating that situation and that they will be paying for it. Another concern of mine was traffic, and I'm glad that was addressed, that it will be coming in from the outlet road, and that they will pay for the improvements theirs and the traffic. So, I want the public to know, yes, we did look at all those different issues that could possibly come up, and I appreciate the fact that our former mayor mentioned about the assembly and the meeting, and I've always believed in teamwork, and I, that's the one thing you and I will always agree on. I see this as an opportunity for our city, because I always liked to be the devil's advocate, and I said, "Okay, so how are we benefiting?" And the city manager can attest to that. I said, "Tell me. Tell me how," right? And it's with the infrastructure that they're going to supply that will allow other individuals to develop property and for our community to prosper. And I am one that is notorious for looking at all the fine print, and I appreciate the hard work that the attorneys have done. I appreciate the fact of the Coyotes. I know the 20 years that it has taken. I did meet your original chief, and I know how she felt about that. And I am also glad that we looked at the problem gambling, because unfortunately, our younger generation, that is the, one of the biggest health crises right now, and that our attorney, Andrew, took the time to look into all the opportunities and not just say, "Well, it's a flat fee," and not have a game plan. And I hope that if it comes to fruition, that the school district takes advantage of the opportunity that we as the city saw and looked at the whole community's needs. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion, and I will second it.
I would like
Excuse me, excuse me, mayor.
Yes, yes.
This is Councilwoman Marilyn Dyer Cruz.
Yes.
I would also like to actually just kind of go over and agree with so many things that our councilman Hernandez has just expressed. A tremendous amount of work has gone into this to see how we can protect our community and the future of our community with the financial impact that it will have in years to come. And the, you know, the impact funds, those are not under control of the city. That is actually control under the tribe, and we as a city will actually have to apply with their approval in order to receive any of those funds. So, on the impact funds, it's been a tremendous amount of work and time that's been invested in this. And though things have changed on the federal level concerning the long-term goals for our city, this MSA really addresses protecting us in the future. Hopefully, that the casino will be built and that it will bring people to stop here. I believe it will. Only time will tell financially how well that's going to work out for the community as well as for the tribe. But I really appreciate all the hard work that has gone into this, and even on our end as a council, the questions, multiple questions and concerns, and how well the tribe has worked with Mr. Jared and Mr. Summers in answering as many questions as they can for us, which I truly do appreciate that. So, I just wanted to say thank you for everyone's hard work, and the questions that we brought up and our concerns have all been addressed. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cruz. I believe Councilwoman Rose has a final comment. Okay. Go ahead, Jared, and I'll have Councilwoman Rose make the final comments.
What was that? Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so, as during that last comment, I was actually emailing with the tribe's attorney and speaking with the tribe's representatives here in the room and speaking with Mr. Silva. And what I can report to you is Mr. Silva said he was okay with my answer, and I don't think he said he's withdrawing his comment about it, but I do think that a change would make a stronger agreement. The tribe's attorney, Heather Sibian, she also agrees, and Mr. Greit and Chair Chavarosa also agree. And so, if you would like language included, that's fine. We can do it. The issue it poses, though, is the tribe would then have to, as a whole, agree on it. And so, that would then cause, you can propose it, we can make that change, and then if you give direction to sign the agreement in that way, that would then go back to the tribe for the tribal council to review. So, it's up to you. If you want that included, it will result in a
Further delay.
A further delay, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, this is interesting, you know. Excuse me. Councilwoman Rose?
No, I, so, I'm glad that you disclosed what the conversation was going on, because right now, what I've heard, I think we've all heard, is there, there is a tight window right now that we are supposed to be, that's why we're meeting now.
Yes.
And that we're supposed to make a decision, and the last thing I would want to see is to have any adverse effect on anybody to extend this, to add this. So, you said that it, you know, it could be added, or if it's not added, it doesn't change anything. So, thank you for that.
And so, yeah, and either way you want to go. The language that I would recommend that I have run through past Treble's attorney is that we add on Exhibit C, add a number 12 there, that those funds, this would be something the tribe is responsible for payment, those funds addressed through the impact fund in the manner identified in Section 13. So, all we'd be doing is referring back up to the section that they are indeed responsible for it. And so, and the reason why we need to be in the manner addressed in Section 13 is that section says there's going to be these monies set aside, and then it would be paid through a certain process, and as was identified, I forget which council member.
So, Andrew, so with that, that mere language change, it would not cause any delay?
It would, no, it would cause a delay, that if we added that sentence to Exhibit C, it would have to go back to, you would have approved it, it would be done deal with you, but we'd still have to go back to tribal, the tribal council to
However, if we did not do that, with that not being in the language, it's not going to impact the agreement one way or another?
I don't think that it materially affects the interpretation of the agreement, and at the end of the day, the impact fund is going to be, money's going to be set aside by the tribe. They're agreeing to do that, which is the summary of, I mean, Exhibit C is just a summary. And it was, as I was drafting that, my intent with drafting it was to look at a 45-page document, have one, one and a half pages that clearly succinctly identify, "These are the monies that we're talking about here."
Well, with that being said, Andrew, you're a subject matter expert, and so, we have to trust you.
Well, thank you.
So, I see no one else on the screen. I will entertain a motion as well. I will second that to approve this.
Motion.
I'll second it. Vote, please.
The motion is to approve as is?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I was going to ask.
Yes, to approve as is.
Councilmember Cruz, how do you vote? And the motion is passed unanimously to approve resolution as is.
Congratulations, all. Okay, with that, if there's no further business.
Last comment. Next steps, we will, with approved, the tribe has approved it, that's enough to get it up to BIA. I believe the mayor has a copy to sign in his hands now.
Yes, I do.
And then we'll get that up to BIA and hopefully see success there, and then we'll be in conversation with the council and the community about the right times and ways to support the application of the governor's office and with BIA. So, we'll keep folks informed as we go forward, and that's the next step. Thank you.
At 7:59, the meeting is adjourned, and we'll be going into a closed session.
And we may have public comment on that closed session.
Session, Mr. Brand?
Welcome back, Mr. Brand.
Guys, I was hoping you guys could explain what you guys are going into so the public knows. But again, my name is Rodney Brand Jr., city planning commissioner and resident here lifelong here in Barstow. Okay, as you, mayor and council, make the decision tonight, I hope in the best interest for our community of Barstow, please keep in mind and consider the exceptional job Mr. Espinoza has professionally performed as city manager after the loss of both our previous city manager, Mr. Willie Hopkins, who served our city very professionally and with high qualifications, as well as our assistant city manager, who we also just recently lost. I can only imagine the stress and workload of being a city manager in our city. Our current city manager wears many hats as we all do. Personally and professionally, I have witnessed Mr. Andy Espinoza Jr. pick up the torch where our previous city manager, Mr. Hopkins, left off, and he has carried the torch strong for Barstow with professionalism, as well as possessing immense knowledge of Barstow through his many years serving our law enforcement and most of all, being a Barstow resident. We all, as humans, wear many hats on a daily basis. Mr. Espinoza has shown he is up to the assignment and can handle the challenge. I am in support of continuing his management position if he could, if he would choose to accept the privilege of serving our mayor and city council as they serve the community of Barstow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brand. So noted.
That is all the comments we have on this item.
Okay. Let me just, let me just read this just for protocol. Yeah, this is a time and place for the general public. Thank you, Mr. Brand, for stepping up to address the government board on matters on the closed session agenda and within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes or less. Good job, Mr. Brand. Our request to speak must be received prior to the agenda being addressed, and if special obligations are required necessary, a notice must have been given to the city clerk. Do we have any other comments? Okay, we're going to be going into closed session at this time. Public employment discussion in terms city manager and city manager. I'll entertain a motion as well as second to go into closed session. Okay, first and second vote, please.
Councilmember Cruz, how do you vote?
Yes.
A motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you.